Good evening and welcome to the February 8th meeting of the Sherburne School Committee. My name is Nancy Cordell and I call this meeting to order at 6:32. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with the Act extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law by Governor Baker, June 16th, 2021. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne School website. Please note this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. I will ask now, I will read the kind of rules around public comment if we have anyone on the call that would like to make a public comment on the Zoom that make it like to make a public comment. No? All right, great, that well, that concludes the public community comments, community comment section of the agenda. And I would like to turn it over to Superintendent Smith for her report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Assistant Superintendent McCoy, will you start to share my PowerPoint? I have to tell you, I don't get out to the schools as much as I thought I would in a small district. I always thought it was because I was in such a big district, it was hard to to get around. I say that because the best part of my day is when there is a scheduled visit, which I just had last week at Pine Hill. So I was invited to go there to read to a first grade class. So Principal Brown, it was International Read Day or World Reading Day. I know you see Global Play Day, I'll talk about that, but.
We were kicking off our Reading Olympics, which is an activity, a series of activities that our school librarian Lori Ryan has designed to parallel the Olympics.
Well, I was invited to the first grade class of Emily Gurd. I can't tell you how wonderful this was. You have such special children, their attention span was amazing. I read two of my favorite books that I would read to my own daughters, and I want to remind everybody they're 38 and 35. I was telling them that this weekend how exciting it was to read Dr. Seuss, Marvin K. Mooney, Will You Please Go? The kids loved it. And Berenstain Bears, always my favorite, and it was The Truth. And I just have to read to you, and these are your little first graders. So everybody knows when you go to a class that you get these wonderful drawings with hearts and flowers. I don't get this all the time. And just to read, so Dear Mrs. Smith, thank you for reading two books for us. My favorite was Berenstain Bears from Victor. Dear Mrs. Smith, thank you for reading the Berenstain Bears and The Truth. I liked it a lot. Love, I think it's my L. Dear Mrs. Smith, I loved when you read the Berenstain Bears. Thank you for reading with us. I'll just read a few, but Dear Mrs. Smith, thanks for reading Dr. Seuss. I like that because they kept saying how to get out. Love, Noah. So when you have chances, I have two more, let me do this. Dear Mrs. Smith, thank you for reading, please go now. It is a really good book from Pete. And my last note here is Dear Mrs. Smith, thank you for reading this book, Love Aranata. So I have to tell you how much fun it was. They were very invested in the reading, asked wonderful questions, and I was certainly welcome. So thank you to that class. And I look forward, Dr. Brown, to coming over whenever I need a refresher. And I love that the teacher said I donated the books to the library and she said they're the favorite books, the kids keep taking out. So parents out there, I know you do a great job with this, but read, read, read. It's wonderful for our children. I also got next slide. I have never heard of such a thing as Global Play Day. But after I spent time in the school, this I believe is the fifth grade, where if you can't tell what they're doing, they actually built forts. And you could see their little shoes and sneakers out from under the so-called drapings where they were playing games, they were having a good time. And don't I go home that evening? And next slide, please, let me just show you a couple of these, you know, some of them organized games, some of them building things where there was talk. And I wrote down notes to myself. It said that we don't do enough of this creative play, where we just let kids play. And it's okay during school time because what they do is they create, they problem solve, they investigate. So all of these wonderful skills, they're life skills, you know, getting along, you know, forming groups, forming teams. So I want to thank you, Dr. Brown. It's always wonderful when I come there, there's always something, you know, terrific happening with the kids, they're engaged, you know, you walk through the classrooms, you know, the kids are happy to be in school. And I know this talk, and certainly you'll hear me talk a little bit tonight, you know, about what it's been like for these kids the past three years. And we often talk about little kindergarteners who in March of 2020, you know, their world changed. You know, last year you came back, you did an excellent job, but but it wasn't what we would have called a normal school day. This year we continue to strive for that. But your kids are resilient, you know, you see the kids here with the masks on, I'm sure they would rather otherwise, but they're able to get through their days, learn their lessons, socialize with their friends. And again, it's, it was a great, a great opportunity for me to be in there. This here was, I was actually far away, but I was excited to see the band practicing and performing up on the stage. And the this other slide here is, we have our parents, and I want to encourage parents if they haven't already, we have almost 1,100 students who have opted into our home testing program. So that kit, a testing kit is given to them every two weeks with two tests in it. For those parents, again, we're asking them to use the so-called surveillance testing, or if they need to for symptomatic testing, we're asking to do that on Mondays or before we start the school week. So you can see the organization here where parents come in and just sign out the kits. And as I said, it'll be every two weeks. Next slide, please. I'm hoping that this is going to be winding down these presentations. I actually did this presentation very similar. I had to upgrade these numbers or update these numbers as far as your vaccination rates. So this is as of February 8. And for now, the vaccination rates still mean something, and I'll explain it along with this slide. I've always said you have a high vaccination rate amongst our Dover Sherburne community. Booster rates right now are currently unavailable. We continue to encourage any of those students that are eligible and certainly our staff eligible, you know, to find, and there are many appointments out there. We took a look today to see if appointments are readily available and they continue to be readily available. You have 99% of your staff across all four schools vaccinated, and this makes a difference when you look at fully vaccinated students. Chickering has reached that magic number. When you look at the percentage of students and you include staff, they've reached that 80% mark. And I'll tell you why that's important. Pine Hill has been at, it is at 84% currently, it's been at over 80% with its students for a few weeks now. The middle school is at 80%, 88% total, which includes their staff and students. And our high school is at 91%, including staff and students. The reason that 80% mark is important because as it stands right now, and I can say this to you this evening, and it could change in the next day or two. So I will remind you that the Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley, has put a mask mandate in effect through February 28. That is for every school in Massachusetts. It is not a choice. I don't have the authority to do otherwise to unmask our students. Now, I will put the word but in there. I believe on October 15th, the Commissioner sent out a memo to any school that reached this 80% threshold with students and staff, that you could put in an attestation form for the superintendent to claim, yes, in fact, I have this data, this information, we have reached 80%. And that gave the authority back to the superintendent, school committee, to make decisions for their district. I immediately, once the high school reached 80%, I believe it's on the 20th of October, I was able to file that attestation form. It was approved sometime towards mid-November, I believe, right before Thanksgiving. At that time, we were readily getting ready to unmask our students. And I think you all know what happened starting in early December. And that's where Omicron hit, our numbers started to rise, and we had to put a pause on that. In the meantime, the vaccination became available for our five to 11-year-olds, which made a big difference at what was happening at our middle school, which wasn't reaching that 80%. So once that happened in November into December for our students to get fully vaccinated, very quickly our middle school reached that 80% threshold. More recently, Pine Hill, and very recently, Chickering. So as of today, I did fill out the attestation form for Dover Middle School, for Pine Hill Elementary, and for Chickering Elementary. I probably will know within a week whether that has been approved or not. If it is approved, it again comes back to us for the authority to unmask. But at this point, that cannot be done before the 28th of January. So I will keep you updated. It is continuing to move the so-called goalposts in order to to get that touchdown of unmasking. But understand there are a lot of things that play into this. We meet regularly with an advisory, members from our Boards of Health, from both Dover and Sherburne, who are very careful in keeping our students and our staff safe, but not without understanding how important it is to move forward, which is our goal. Next slide, please. These testing programs, again, the at-home testing program, this will go through April 22nd. This is an opt-in, where there is an opt-in form, where again, you are given these kits, you know, to take home, two tests in each of the kits every two weeks. Our in-school symptomatic testing continues at every one of our nurses' offices for those students who develop symptoms during the school day. Our drive-through symptomatic testing program just ended last Friday. We weren't in school last Friday, so actually, the end date was Thursday. And I will tell you that we will continue to utilize this. We have February vacation coming up, and we thought it would be prudent to make sure that we offer drive-through symptomatic testing, where families may be traveling, there may be more socialization, and just to make sure that we do whatever we can to, you know, to keep our students and our staff safe and healthy, to identify any positive cases, again, concerned about the the transmission of the virus. So our community mobile clinic ended on the 27th of January. It had been slated to go until the 30th, but we had the big blizzard that weekend. It was a wonderful partner for us and collaborator during some of the highest points of the Omicron surge. So those programs have ended, other than the at-home, the in-school symptomatic testing, and we will reserve, again, the right to bring our drive-through symptomatic testing program when we feel that it benefits our district. And next slide. Easier numbers. So the drive-through testing from January 10th, when we opened it up through February 8th, you see 132 tests administered, 26 positive results. The mobile clinic, 446 tests administered and 88 positive results. And presently, I think it's important to look at our positive cases at each of our schools. And the high-end numbers began with the, again, the Omicron surge, you'll see the date of January 15th. And the large numbers at each of the schools. Over to the side, you see 308 staff have opted into the at-home testing program, and 1083 of our students have opted into this program. Next slide, please. And again, this is what I just explained to you about the vaccination rate, the unmasking with the 80% threshold. I've gone over this, and I will tell you one of the changes. On the 10th of January, DESI sent out a memo where previously, they talked about when they approve lifting the mask mandate for those schools that reach that 80% vaccination rate, at one point, they were going to be requiring that all staff and students that are not vaccinated remain masked. And that was concerning to us. It was concerning to be the masking police, you know, that that is not how we want our students to feel. We want it to be optional and a choice and respectful. So DESI has changed guidelines here, and they're strongly recommended. But it is not required that unvaccinated individuals at schools continue to mask. So once we get to that point, we're meeting with the principals to talk about, as I told, the regional school committee, to talk about ways students can work with us to develop our protocols and norms whereby it is a respectful unmasking, meaning it is optional. And we have to respect people's choices, whatever they are, when when that happens. We have here strongly recommend antigen or PCR test for all symptomatic individuals before returning to school. That is not mandated, but we'll certainly work with families if they need a test to do this, just to be sure when they're sending their children back that have had symptoms or staff members, that you have, you know, some assurances that you don't actively have the viral load. And as I said, I did submit the 80% vaccination rate threshold for every school in the district as of today. Next slide. We had talked at the region meeting about tentatively scheduling for March 7th, pending DESI guidelines and approval. And I say that again, because right now, the only one I have approval for is our high school. So we are looking at this point, after meeting with our Health and Hygiene, March 7th, I have had numbers of parents reaching out and saying, why not the 28th of February, right after the vacation? And I can't tell you that that hasn't been part of the discussion. But we're a little bit concerned with collecting data if we unmask on the 28th. And there is any kind of a cluster or a surge, is it because of the unmasking? You know, is it because, you know, the vacation where people again have been either traveling or socializing? So we wanted to give us that little bit of a barrier between coming back from vacation to really clearly take a look at that data. But we are clearly ready, once we're able to unmask. There are a few schools that I know of that have already begun the unmasking process and are collecting data, and I'm hearing it's been successful. So we are encouraging all families to vaccinate eligible children, including the boosters, if you're eligible, approved by the CDC and the FDA. Students and staff testing positive for COVID must isolate for five days, may return on day six if symptoms have subsided. Again, Health and Hygiene and Boards of Health will continue to monitor data positivity and transmission rates. And today, when we talked about pivoting accordingly, one of the things was, you know, not looking at a whole community and pivoting, you know, you know, every week or so, but looking at those things that might be concerning. You know, a cluster within a group of students on a team together, a classroom where we might have to go in and work with a particular grade or classroom and try to understand so that it isn't something that is spreading where it's highly transmissible at this point. And again, if students and staff are considered at risk, identify themselves as such, we will work to provide them with high-quality masks, and we will continue with our at-home testing program and in-school symptomatic testing, as I said, will continue. So that is my update tonight. I know we have some information, obviously, on the budget that we're waiting to get to. I did this presentation, and again, I continue to change it and update it as DESI continues to update us on a regular basis. So.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Smith. Thank you. And I think that we have two questions, Dennis, and then Amanda.
Can you hear me? You can hear me? Good. Kathleen, can you just, thank you, good summary, and I think it kind of helps provide some clarity on sort of what a path forward might look like? Could you just reiterate what the process is and who holds the decision rights in terms of, we get the okay from the Commissioner, that then puts the decision into kind of our hands? Can you help define what our is?
Sure.
Who's involved in sort of that approval process?
Well, the first part of this, like I said, it's a moving ball because right now, we have a masking mandate through February 28th. That being said, the high school, because they reached their 80%, we filed that attestation form, I was approved by the Commissioner back in November, the authority lies back with us. Now, when I say us, I'm talking the school committee and the superintendent. But what I will tell you is the policy that you developed on your face-covering policy puts the authority with the superintendent, following the guidelines of DESI. Now, there's been a lot of talk about your Health and Hygiene Advisory, who are members of your Boards of Health of both Dover and Sherburne. That is a collaboration. We are very fortunate to have them giving us over an hour every single week, you know, to talk about all of the things you've heard me talking about today. We are all trying to, you know, move in the same direction. There's a lot of very healthy dialogue, you know, again, wanting our kids to get back to normal. And if unmasking and it's safe to do so, then, you know, we're, we'll continue to communicate all of those things, you know, to all three communities. Because, you know, Dennis, it's, it's interesting because I could hear by the end of the week that Pine Hill, Chickering, and the middle school have also been approved. So that would give us, you know, the authority, you know, it could be before February 28th. But at this point here, you know, we do realize we have a break coming up, February vacation, I believe, I'd have to look, I know the end date is that Monday, the 28th, for coming back. It's coming very soon, it's a week from Friday. So it gives us a chance, number one, I need to start communicating with the families, you know, that this is something that very well could happen to prepare them. That's why I'm talking about boosters, or if you're thinking about, you know, getting your, your child vaccinated or boosted, you know, this would be the time to be thinking about that. You know, if you consider yourself high-risk, we will work with all of those families, you know, to make sure that people feel safe and respected. That's the other part of this. John Smith will tell you that his students have done everything that they have asked at the high school. You know, you might have to have a gentle reminder, you know, pull the mask up over your nose, et cetera. But the kids have been very resilient and, you know, deserve the opportunity, if it's safe to do so, to unmask when we're allowed to do that. I don't know if that answers it, it's, it's a lot of players. We've worked collaboratively with school committee. I also am part of your MOA with your teachers' union. I will meet with them just to update them and to hear if there are things that we need to put in place to make sure our teachers, again, feel safe and respected, and making sure that we have, as we said, the high-quality masks, for, for an example.
Yep, thank you.
Amanda?
Thank you, Nancy, and thank you, Superintendent Smith. I wanted to just ask if it might be possible in those communications around unmasking, if you reiterate to families how important it is that we all work together to keep everyone safe by making sure they're not sending kids to school with any kind of symptoms, to protect everyone, but particularly our high-risk students. I think that that's worth reminding people. I think people have done a really good job, and I understand the impulse, just want to send kids to school because you need to get to work. But I think one reason we've been so successful is keep, keeping kids in school is because we all have been working together in that way, and I think that's important to, to remember going forward.
Amanda, that, that's a great point. And I can't thank the families enough because truthfully, you know, our families have been working with us, they've, you know, been respectful. I know sometimes there were phone calls, it might have been around the holiday, that a parent, you know, didn't want to hear that there was required at the time, no quarantining, but we're, we're doing everything we can. As you said, it isn't just about your child, it's about all the children in our school, we're a school community. So, you know, we certainly will make sure we continue to remind in a respectful way.
Thanks, Amanda. I have a quick question, too, just on process. If the high school is unmasked, which they don't have to wear masks, I'm assuming anywhere, what happens on the bus with the middle schoolers?
That is.
You know, I mean, I don't know, yeah, that'll be an interest, it's an interesting.
But the high schoolers would have to be masked on the bus at this point also. That's, I'm so glad you brought that up. I kind of have lost sight of that, but it is a federal mandate. So as of right now, and Nancy, again, that could change next week. But for right now, on the bus, it's windows cracked, driver masked, all students masked, including, let's say it was the high school and not the middle school. You know, my hope is that, especially where we share a campus, and I did share that with the Commissioner and his team, they're very aware of that. Our middle school has a high vaccination rate. I have every reason to believe they will approve certainly our middle school.
Right, thank, thank you. Okay, next up is Dr. Brown.
Hello, good evening. At our last meeting, you charged me with bringing some deeper information about our MTSS, our multi-tiered student support system, information back to the school committee so that you could use that in conjunction with budget development. So I will speak to that. First, just a couple exciting updates. Today, we received, we were able to have communication, as Superintendent Smith mentioned, with our Health and Hygiene Committee. We will be resuming in-person all-school meeting attendance, starting this week. We, if you recall, we went into, coming off the holiday break at the end of December, the new year break, we anticipated the January surge, and we were very prudent going into January, and the children have been streaming, all-school meeting has been streamed into the classrooms. And despite our wonderful technology, it's just not the same. So this Friday, we will, we will, K through, K through five will be assembling in person, which, which is a big deal at Pine Hill School. It also happens to be the 100th day of school on Friday. So that's a, that's a big milestone, unless you're a kindergartner, and then your 100th day of school is on, is on Monday. So I shared a sort of a visual in the school committee packet, and I, I think I spoke to MTSS structures at our last meeting. So I won't go into too much detail unless, of course, you, you have questions and want me to refresh that. And I apologize to the school committee members who also sit on our school advisory council. We, we talk about this a lot, so they could, they could give the presentation here. But my overview, I, a reminder that all Massachusetts schools are charged with providing supports and interventions to students who are not making effective progress in the areas of social-emotional learning, behavior, and academic progress. And we have been very lucky to grow those structures in all of our Dover Sherburne schools over the last few years, with keen qualitative and quantitative assessments that our teachers use to demarcate student growth over time, with staff, you know, starting at the classroom teacher level, and then branching out to interventionists and support staff and instructional coaches, who are all part of supporting our ability to meet the needs of students individually and collectively. So I gave an overview of, you recall it, our first data team cycle, probably October 1st-ish, we had about 112 students who we identified as needing intervention. A reminder that this is not special education, this is general education and how we support children at the classroom level and with additional supports beyond that. We just ran through our mid-year data team meetings, grade-level teachers and all of the support staff that, that helped to complement the classroom teachers. And at this time, we have 104 children receiving intervention in this next data cycle. They're not necessarily the same students, or students' needs may have shifted, or we may have, they may have made growth in the area that we provided intervention, and we may have shifted the content area focus. So some of our children receive both academic and social-emotional learning interventions, some students might get just social-emotional or an academic area. So again, that's, all of our students have support plans. Um, so, uh, again, that's, um, all of our students have support plans. Uh, classroom teachers are communicating with families. And, uh, we, uh, continually reorganize. Uh, the staffing supports that we have allocated to meet the children's needs in their focus areas of instruction. So that we are effectively and efficiently and creatively, um, meeting with class, complementing classroom schedules. And deploying, deploying any additional staffing that are, that are assigned to work alongside the classroom teaching teams. Um, so again, you'll see an overview of, um, uh, specifically the staffing breakdown that you asked me to provide. And I spoke to, um, uh, the social emotional learning specialists that we were able to allocate just this year. Who's, uh, we split with Chicaring School, so it's point five at, at Pine Hill. Um, an amazing compliment to our classroom teachers in being able to provide, uh, whole-class instruction. In areas of social emotional learning, uh, as well as small group or, or individual consulting to individual student. Plans for growth. Um, our behavior specialists have been very lucky, um, I mentioned here. Uh, you know, when I started at Pine Hill, that position was point four and it crept to point five and then it crept to point eight. This current year, um, we were able, uh, the, the, um, our director of student services and our central office team had the. Foresight to appreciate, um, uh, that given lots of, uh. Shifts and disruptions to last year's instructional schedules. Uh, our BCBA, uh, board certified behavior specialist, uh, was allocated to Pine Hill School for, uh, a one-point-O. And, and you'll, um, when folks do an overview of next year's budget, you know, we, we plan to, to maintain that level of support, which is, is, uh. Um, that person has been a great lever for us to coach teachers. To assess individual students, to help us with behavior plans, to help us. Um, make sure that we're using effective accommodations for children who get overstimulated or, um, for whom, um. Um, uh, behavioral regulation is, is, is tricky. So, um, that comes into play, um, in every classroom across the building. And then, of course, our academic supports are provided by classroom teachers, teaching assistants and the interventionist staff. Uh, uh, we grew from one position to three positions this year. And, and again, we'll talk about the recommendations that have been made when we get to the budget part of the meeting. But we're, we're excited to, uh, continue to increase, um, those supports, um, as you'll see reflected in the budget. Um, we, uh, as you know, we've historically had a, uh, one-point-O adjustment counselor. Sometimes referred to as a school counselor, uh, who works in collaboration with our, our school psychologist. And their roles, Apple, uh, their roles overlap, uh, a little bit, but they, they're, um, you know, they're designated with, uh. Specific functions, uh, separate from each other as well, to make sure that we're meeting all of our special education evaluation. As well as counseling supports and coaching for teachers and, um, supports for parents. And, uh, those, the people in those positions are very effective at being what we call liaisons to any outside. Uh, mental health providers that families might be engaged with on behalf of, of their children. Um, so those, you know, in this time of mental health crisis across our country, uh, those, those positions, uh. Uh, certainly have always been spread thin and hardworking and, and never more so than, than this current time in, in our school. Um, so, um, again, when we get to the budget, uh, part of this evening. Um, and, um, as mentioned in your joint school committee presentation, uh, recently. We look forward to increasing the adjustment counselor support to continue to grow the. Strong, robust, rich and responsive services we have in place for kids. I'm trying to be succinct, which as you know is hard for me, because I know we have a. Big budget conversation coming up, but happy to take any questions you may have.
No questions from me.
Excellent. I was wondering if I was on mute this whole time by accident.
No, I thank you for laying it out this way. It's clear. Um, it sort of helps tie need to. The request from funding and sort of resource perspective. So appreciate the diligence that you and the team have, uh. Have invested to, to get us this detail.
Yeah. Thank you so much Barbara for that, for all that detail. That was so helpful.
Great, thank you.
Okay, now, Dawn, I'll turn it over to you for the next two hours or?
Let's hope not. Um, we'll do the easy things first. So in your packet, you have the warrant report. So obviously those are warrants that have been processed since the last time you met. Um, one I just wanted to point out, you'll see sort of two-thirds down, uh, a sixty-five thousand dollar warrant going to your S R three. Um, that is technology items, devices, both a combination of Chromebooks and iPads. Um, and that represents about forty percent of your, um, S R three grant. But I, so I just wanted to highlight that those funds are being utilized. Uh, some of those items actually were, uh, ones that we purchased back in the early fall. Um, but we had to wait for the grant to get approved before we could process the payments. That's why you're just now seeing that in, uh, in December. So again, I think this is, gives you a good, a feel of the different, um, funds and grants that we use on a typical basis. So if you ever have any detailed questions about those, uh, just let us know. And again, Nancy, thank you for continuing to head over to town hall and. And sign these on behalf of the school committee. Um, the next report is your monthly operating report. Again, we're continuing the process of putting in bold the new information, but still continuing, uh. The discussion and the various, the, um, variance analysis from, uh, beginning of the school year. Uh, so we do have a couple of things in bold, um, this month. Um, as Barb mentioned in her, uh, her report, and as you know, we've added an additional, uh, uh, EA, um. Support for the specialist and we're charging that to our Title One grants. That's actually picking up the, um, position where we had the, the staff member who retired mid-year. So she was doing some of that workforce as she was shadowing and overlapping the teacher who took over her classroom. Um, and then once she retired, we've added that, backfilled that position with a educational assistant and, uh, using, uh, Title One grants to do that. Um, in addition, you heard, um, at the January eighteenth joint meeting that we have brought on board a long-term nurse. Um, to support the nursing services this year that's being shared by all three school districts. So your, these statements reflect your portion, um, of that long-term substitute nurse who was added, like I said, in November. On the expenditure side, just, uh, we are seeing an uptick in, uh, services needed for our students on IEPs. That, um, are educated within the, uh, Pine Hill building. Uh, so you'll see that, that, that variance has actually grown a little more. Um, and it's additional services that they're needed that we can't provide in school. So we have to contract with, um, with groups to do those, uh, as needed. In addition, um. We've recorded the cost of some in-district sped transportation that is being, uh, sort of run through the region. We, we own the, the vehicle here at the region and so we're, um. Transporting a couple of students, so we're charging some to Dover and Sherburne, so we're just now getting that recorded on your book. So you'll see that in your special ed, uh, transportation line item, uh, but just wanted to point to that, that point that out. That's what's causing that to be over budget up in your in-district transportation. Um, we did a really good look at, um, your out-of-district placements mainly because it helps us start setting the budget for fiscal year twenty-three. So we have made sure everything that we know about right now for fiscal year twenty-two is encumbered in your financial statements. You'll see that there's variances between where we thought students were going to be attending, um, first, you know, collaborative versus, uh, uh. Non-public schools, but at the end of the day, when we put them all into, um, the financials, we are in line with budget. Uh, so that's the good news, even though you see some big swings, it, uh, in totality, we are within budget. Um, the, uh, issue with that too, though, is we're within budget, which means if anything else crops up. Um, this year, because there's still a lot of things going on in the, um, student world right now with looking at various. Uh, students who may need to be placed elsewhere or such. Hold on. Let me just get him mute. There we go. Um. You, that's where we fall back. We'll talk about a little bit in the budget process about how we use circuit breaker to cover us. Um, so in the instance that we had another placement come about right now. You know, we don't have any more money in the operating budget and that's where circuit breaker helps us out. So we'll talk about that a little, um, more detail when we talk about the fiscal year twenty-three budget. Um, I think other than that, that is, um, the two new things I have to share. Um, are there any questions on the monthly report?
Thanks Nancy. Dawn, thank you. The, the write-up was incredibly helpful that you sent to kind of put a little bit of the context here. So, um, just a couple of questions. I'm sorry I didn't get them over to you earlier here, but, um. Under the salaries for sped administration, given the focus, um, kind of highlighted by some of Barbara's comments and whatnot. I would have expected to see that we were kind of on budget or maybe even over budget, given sort of the focus and the spend there. Is, i- is that just kind of timing or are we thinking, because when I read this, it's sort of.
Yeah, that's actually an unfilled position. Um, it's an administrative assistant, uh, position. Um, that has, that's unfilled and we're, we're trying to decide what to do with that. It's, it's a clerical position versus a direct student. Um, position.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Um, I'll just kind of keep going down.
Yeah.
For custodial, we had a huge focus on cleaning the building and all that kind of stuff for obvious reasons over the past couple of years here. Or is, is the reduction in custodial services here a reflection of? That or is it?
No, so the, the balance there really represents, so if you go back and look, so. When we do the budget, you have all the line items that make that up. You're going to see that there's a line item for summer custodian. Which we have not used the last two years, so that's a positive variance that's there. It also, what's left is the overtime that we're still going to potentially incur. Um, when you see this, next time, you're going to see a hit to that because we've had two big snowstorms that have caused, uh, a lot of extra overtime for custodial services. So the overtime is not recorded until it's incurred. So you're going to see that number keep going down as we progress through the year and the overtime's incurred. Um, but we will still end up with a, a positive variance because we didn't use our summer staff.
So our custodial service deals with all like that kind of stuff? It's not like a town provided?
So the town does like the parking lots, um, but we do sort of the outside of the school.
Okay. Um, just quickly, for the sped service, under expenditure sped services and supplies. That's related to the, uh, transportation, is that?
No, that's actually, that's actually services that we're providing for students who are, um, on IEPs. In the building that, uh, we have to go outside to give them everything.
That was your, that was your earlier comment?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The transportation that I alluded to is where you see the eleven thousand negative variance on the transportation services. Because that's, it's special ed transportation, but it's in-district, um, transportation, which is why it's in that line item. Versus being down where you see special ed transportation.
Okay. Um, two more points on the custodial services, maintenance of buildings. I know that the new facilities manager across the district has been in for a couple of months now.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is there anything there related to why those two items are coming in under? Or is it just kind of timing similar to what you talked about earlier?
Well, yeah, part of it is we don't, you know, as we do custodial orders for supplies, we don't encumber for the whole year. We do those as we, um, incur. So you're what, you still have, you know, four, four, at least four full months left. So that number will go down. And our maintenance of buildings, that includes a reserve for emergency repairs and such. So we don't, you won't see all of that encumbered right away because that also, um, is spent as it's incurred. So Dennis, when we get towards, you know, like April and we get a sense that, um. We, we have, we've made it clear and there's not a lot of repairs, we work with Barbara and we go find improvements and things that we can take care of. Within the operating budget that are under the capital threshold. So you'll see us, you know, um, do some little projects around. We have a list that will, that we keep track of, but we don't like to do that until we know we're going to make it through the year without having to pay for any emergency repairs.
Okay, makes sense. Finally, maybe this kind of gets lodged under the budget discussion, but showing that. Assuming everything lands, as you have suggested here, about fifty-eight thousand dollar would be returned to the town. Is that kind of?
Yeah, so not really, right? Because think about all the line items I just told you that we still are going to spend. Right? So they're still, um, they're, you know, so we're tight right now at fifty-eight thousand. So one thing that I did do, so I, I had mentioned that right now, we put as many of these new positions, um, in the operating budget. Because we wanted to wait and see like what grant funding we needed to tap into versus tapping into it and realizing that we've got money left in our operating budget. So, um, we're at the point now where, you know, there's still, we've got, um. Expenses that we are going to be incurred that are not encumbered. So that fifty-eight thousand dollars will probably quickly be, um, eaten up. Uh, so we did, I did move, um, some additional educational assistance and some various grant fundings to give some relief to that. Because I know that we're going to still need a little bit more cushion. So this is where we just start. Um, yeah, looking at our numbers, we'll get as tight as we can. Um, we probably won't end up, if we end up giving anything back this year, it's going to be minimal. Uh, but that's, it's still too early, um, in the year to project that we're going to give that back fifty-eight thousand. I know for sure we're not because of the expenses that I know have to be incurred that aren't encumbered. But this, you know, we encumbered the, the typical normal operating cost, but not the, the, um. You know, things that we don't know about and then we don't, we don't, uh, a lot of supplies, like the, the, uh, front office is still ordering supplies. We don't encumber those for the whole year. We just start, we encumber them as they or, as they're ordered.
Okay.
So yeah, I would say at this point, the fifty-eight thousand may be a little like, we've got to start looking at places that we can, um, you know. Uh, soften this a little bit, knowing that there's still expenses to be incurred in this budget.
Okay. So it sounds like nothing of tremendous concern from a sort of a budget perspective, but we're monitoring it closely in the event.
Yeah, yeah. So we've got, that's where we've got, you know, our, our safety nets, um, to go to, which we'll talk about. Circuit breaker we have for the added district and obviously, you know, we still have positions that could be put into the S R grant. But we haven't yet because we want to maximize our ability to use those funds, um, in the next couple of years for. Still the unexpected that we don't know we may have to, to accommodate.
That's a great, thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Uh, a tiny little piece, but, uh, storage is such a premium in our humble old building. Um, so other places I've worked, um, maintenance or the school office would order lots and lots of supplies to front-load the school year with. We, we definitely order in increments. We have, we don't have a lot of storage space.
And I will say we do that at all schools, just because there's no need to have paper standing around and, um, you know, so we're, I think we streamline that. And that we only buy what you need.
All right, great. Thank you, Dawn. Thank you, Dennis. We do actually have, I forgot about this, uh, uh, point on the agenda and I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Smith. To explain what the A C E D request is and we do have to, uh, vote on that this evening.
Thank you. So, uh, A C E D is your advisory committee on extra duties. Um, usually they meet in October. This year, we actually met on November eighteenth to review requests. One of the requests, uh, put in by, again, Assistant Superintendent, uh, Beth McCoy. And you will see that letter attached really describing the need for the professional learning community leader, PLC leader. For FLESS programs. So the committee did approve the addition of one PLC, professional learning community leader. To facilitate work among five FLESS foreign language in the elementary school educators at both Chicaring and Pine Hill. The stipend for these PLC positions is thirty-seven seventy-eight thirty-two. So three thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. It is split between both Pine Hill and Chicaring. So Pine Hill, uh, would again, uh, have to, um, put forward, uh, eighteen eighty-nine sixteen. Uh, and again, it was approved during that meeting and I am recommending that you, uh, approve this position. And just so you know, um, this position would already join, I believe, um, your six other PLC leaders. That you presently have, uh, at both Pine Hill and Chicaring School for kindergarten through grade five.
Great. Um, can I have a motion to approve the A C E D request?
Dennis Quatson.
Get a second. Sorry, sorry, Amanda.
No, that's okay.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll take a vote. Gita?
Gita Russo, Gita Russo, yes. Came and said my own word, my own name today.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis Quatson, yes.
And Nancy Cordell, yes. All right, Don, back over to you.
So here we are, a couple of months later, I feel like just did this in November, in November. So we're going to build upon the budget that we presented in November. And as you go back into your budget book, you see that we already had several staff positions already added. So we have that the K five math specialist, the additional educational assistance to support the specialist, the E L L upgrade that we need based on the cohort in Pine Hill. And then, as Barb mentioned, going ahead and making the B C B A full time at Pine Hill the way it was operating during this fiscal year. Based on the presentation that all three school committees saw on January eighteenth from Student Services, many of the additional additions that we're bringing forward tonight are coming from that presentation. So I provide for you the second round, our starting point. So if you look at the very top of the summary of budget adjustments, that's where we started and what you guys approved when we met on November sixteenth. We then take the in district and out of district and walk through new information that we've obtained since November to bring us up to speed to where we should be right now for planning for fiscal year twenty three. So I want to talk about this in pieces just because it's much easier that way. So we're going to talk about in district first and go through a couple of pieces of information that we've shared, but initially just walk through the adjustments that we're bringing forward for this evening. So if you remember in the budget memo, I I alluded to the fact that we had several system upgrades that were in the works and we would be bringing that amount forward to you in version two. We're bringing forward two of the upgrades, the website and the financial systems. We're building that into all three districts. It's a one time expense for the three districts at twelve thousand dollars per district. The third system that we talked about was upgrading our, we're not upgrading, but converting our student files, our students' file management for I E Ps over to Aspen. We're going to fund that through grant funds because it's sped related and it's going to enhance our operating environment for special education. So that's not going to be in your operating fund. We're covering that with special education grants. So there's twelve thousand dollars worth of one time expenses for those two upgrades that we'll be doing in fiscal year twenty three. The second addition is what you just approved. So you just approved the F L S position. So we will now incorporate that into your operating budget. That's part of Appendix C now, the educators agreement. And that is based on the ratio and the stipend allowance based on the contract. The next line item we have is a reduction of salaries based on some staffing changes and retirements. And the retirements are minimal. We have some retirements here happening at Central Office and a couple of other places that are able to shave a little bit off of our our budget that we presented in in November. So that's about twenty four thousand dollars of reduction in salaries across various function codes that we know as of today. Now we get to the pieces that we're adding from the presentation on January eighteen. So we have the addition of the point five S E L specialist, which will be co-shared with Chicaring along with a point five adjustment counselor. And Sherburne's part of the floating nurse that we're bringing into the operating budget for all four schools. When we brought in the floating nurse, because part of them is to be there to cover nurses when they're out, we reduce your substitute line item. So therefore, we were able to to not have to bring in the whole cost. But we were going to work under the assumption in the schools that because we have a floating nurse, we won't have to incur substitute costs. So that was, if you remember correctly, I had increased the substitute line item in your November budget because we'd increased the rate. So that was, we were able to take about two thousand dollars off of that cost, which I think makes sense to do. So we're looking at an in district increase of about sixty six thousand seven hundred and eighty nine dollars. I also provided for you, same as I did for the other new positions, the supplemental information to give you a little more background on the positions that we're adding. And so at the bottom of that sheet, you can see where I took all the added positions for fiscal year twenty three budget, which came to about two hundred thousand dollars, and highlighted the fact that we have salary savings from staffing changes and retirements of a hundred and twenty thousand. So you're going to probably say, why is the hundred and twenty thousand not equal to twenty four thousand that we already had? We had already taken into consideration some retirement savings in your version one point out because we we had the mid mid year retirements and some other things that had happened that post budget that we were able to to capture. It was also some staffing changes. So if you remember, the the math specialist that was added was a Pine Hill staff member by taking her salary and sharing it across two schools and then filling her position with a long term subposition newer type teacher, there was savings from that for Pine Hill. So that was also another buffer piece that helped by adding, that helped offset the positions that we're adding. So at the end of the day, the net addition of all the new staffing positions to your operating budget was about eighty five thousand dollars. So you don't always see all the pieces pulled together, but I think that's an important point to 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 bring it to to highlight because otherwise it looks like a huge ask. But we did have some money in our budget that we're able to use to offset those positions. In addition, you have your ten year enrollment history and your five year projections. And so we use this to give us a gauge to see if we have the sections that we think we're going to need for next year. If you look at it just at broad data, where, you know, we've got four hundred and six students this year, the two different projections, one uses the one year rate, one uses a blended three year rate. We're still in that ballpark, but it also depends on how the cohorts go by grade. So we look like we're really going to be fine. The only one that we're going to keep an eye on is the incoming, what will be the fourth grade cohort next year. It has pretty high, the projection rates, they're trending high, the in migration, out migration for that particular grade, which, you know, takes us from sixty five students that we have right now all the way up to somewhere in the seventies. So we will be watching that to see if there is a need for us to, if you if you cross your threshold of your class size policy of eighteen to twenty three, we'll have to evaluate whether or not we need to bring us a section increase in for that cohort. As we've done two years ago, I believe it was, that is one of the benefits of you having a non resident tuition fund that gives you some flexibility for these post budget ads that we may need to do, which is what we did. But we needed to add funny enough, fourth grade section a couple of years ago. We tapped into that to cover it for the first year. And if the needs continues, that's when we built it into the operating budget. So, you know, we'll work with Barbara and her team as students leave, students show up and see where we're right on the cusp there of that need in fourth grade. Other than that, you're, you know, the cohorts that already have the larger classes with that that staff, that section will move up with them. And then, you know, it's a constant shift every year of how many sections, which grades have three and which grades have four, based on the the number of students in that grade. I think, I think that covers everything I had for the in district. So before we switch gears and talk about out of district, I'm happy to answer any questions on the in district operating budget. So we're looking at an increase right now of a five point three one percent on your in district between fiscal year twenty two and twenty three.
Don, and I should know this off the top of my head, but what is, how does that fall within the the last two years?
Yeah, so I think I included in your packet.
So I just, I just ran through that. I just was going.
Yeah, so I I think it's important to highlight that. So last year we only had a point zero eight percent increase. And a lot of that is, we had a lot of staffing retirements that really help offset the salary increases. And we didn't have added positions. So we were able, the town was able to take advantage of all those salary savings from the retirements in fiscal year twenty two. In fiscal year twenty one, we actually had a negative decrease. That was sort of driven by out of district. So I can't really say it was all in district. But overall, we didn't ask for any new funds in twenty one, minimal in twenty two. And so we're coming forward this year with obviously a little bit larger need than normal. If you looked at just your, if we took out all the ads and looked at what our increase for salaries, because obviously salaries is what drives your budget. Where, you know, on your summary, it looks like we have salary increase of five point two seven. Without all the ads, you'd be at about a three point three percent increase. So that's typically the average contractual salary increase we see when you blend all the contracts together. So we are, you know, the added positions did give us a little bit of an uptick. But again, I think it's important to note that, you know, based on unbudgeted staffing changes and cost savings from COVID in fiscal year twenty one, we did return about four hundred thousand dollars to the town. So I think that it's important to look not just at this number by itself, but to look at a lot of different factors when the when the town's evaluating this request. The other thing that comes into play, and I was, I'll go ahead and do this now, is just looking how the region, so right? The the town of Sherburne has to fund not only the elementary budget, but also the region's budget. So just to give you some perspective on what we're requesting at the region level, the Sherburne region assessment is looking at a three point eight percent increase. So that's about what they're, the increase that we're asking on the region side. The budget itself in the in the region was an increase of two point eight five percent. But when you start doing all the calculations to see what the town's portion of that is, Sherburne's portion was an increase over fiscal year twenty two of three point eight percent. So it's, it's, that's probably in the norm. Some years, the Sherburne's asked for very little and the region asks for more. I think we're both, we're both asking, you know, for equitable sort of pieces this year with the region being a little lower and potentially that number could go down at the region because we have a few more adjustments that we can make. But all in all, I think we're putting forward a reasonable request from the two towns based on the last couple of years of budgets, requests and operating turnbacks. And I think it represents what's needed to educate the students that we currently have at Pine Hill.
Great. Amanda, you have a question. I actually have a question after that as well.
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Nancy. So I was actually looking at this and it feels to me, and and this is the point you just made, that this this increase seems relatively small, given the benefit it will have for kids. And I think where we are right now, this is a really wise place to spend money. And they can't learn academic skills if they're not, you know, socially, emotionally healthy and happy. So I think that's really important. And the one question I have, and I think this is a question for you, Dr. Brown, is is that that point five position, both the S E L specialist and the adjustment counselor that are shared with Chicaring, does that give you enough coverage? Because I know those people are kind of on the front lines a lot of the time and they have their regularly scheduled meetings and then things happen with kids in schools. And I just want to make sure that that, because they're shared, it it gives enough coverage.
It will and will obviously be strategic, you know, in assigning caseloads and all of that. Increasing our adjustment counselor support by fifty percent is is amazing. And there's a lot of, you know, a lot of their role is scheduled and predictable. And then the caseloads, of course, are always in flux. So we'll, we'll be creative about how we organize that. I I know you've heard us talk. Our district is sharing more and more staff across the two elementary schools. And it's really helping us grow our our capacity with regard to shared practices and resources. So that's, that's a hidden benefit. I appreciate you looking at the the position of, you know, split on paper, but will will work. Maybe our S E L specialist will work the opposite schedule as the adjustment counselor and they can share space. And but we've got enough people on the front line for kids in need that that pop up, the unpredictable piece that pops up day to day.
Terrific. Thank you. And thank you so much for being so thoughtful about, you know, asking for what you need and to support the kids. I think it's, it's great. Thank you.
My question was along those lines, so I don't have a question. I don't have a question anymore. Dennis?
Again, this is great. Thank you for providing that roll forward, Don. I think that's incredibly helpful to kind of take us from where we were to where we are right now. On the growth projections, they make sense conceptually. Surprised by the size of the jump. Is there any sort of known additions that are baked in there? Or is it all just kind of what the math is telling us?
It's all, it's all what math is telling us. So it's, it's based on, we look at as of October first. So that's the date and you compare the years and that's where you can sort of track the in migration, out migration. So your your tendencies will say, oh, we've got four people who come in now and three people who left. And by by taking, taking a snapshot in time every year as of October first and building that, you know, what changed and using a three year projection. And then we like to look at the one year projection because then that gives us a more current event look at what's really, you know, what happens. I think it gives us a good blend to sort of anticipate what could be happening. I just, it it just, I went back and just checked because Cheryl does these numbers for us because the one hundred and twelve and a hundred and fifteen, those are, those are high numbers. But I think what's driving the one twelve is the one fifteen. And I went back and I think the year before was like one oh nine or something. So the numbers are telling the story of what really happens. I think, you know, a lot of things that happen at Pine Hill, you've got a, you've got a small cohort. So those percentages are really, they're good, but they're not, you know, great when you look it up. Because you could have a family, like I know Barb's had families like four, you know, move in or out or twins in a grade. So that can have a more substantial impact in these numbers than maybe it should just because the small numbers that we're actually analyzing. But I think it has served us well in just knowing what we potentially should be planning for and having the foresight to say, okay, you know, we may need a section, additional section in this grade. So we we think about it now versus waiting to August. We're like, oh, my gosh, where did all these people come from? We just shut up. This sort of helps us sort of anticipate that that could be a possibility.
No, it it makes total sense. And just to make sure I'm reading it correctly, if I look at the top schedule, so if I look at the third grade for this year, there's sixty five kids in that cohort. Is that correct?
Yep.
So previous year, they would have been in second grade, no surprise, sixty seven.
Right, it went down.
Sixty three.
Yeah.
Sixty three, the previous.
Yeah.
Fifty four, the previous. So if we just look at that grade over the course of three years, went from fifty four to sixty five. Is that, am I reading this correct?
Yep.
So that cohort grew by ten, just over.
Yeah, so that's typically what we see. You look at your kindergarten, we usually do see the influx between kindergarten and first grade. Because there are families that still may go to a private kindergarten. You know, back in the day, we had a lot of kids who'd go to Montessori schools and then join us in first grade. We don't, we used to have actually built in a factor for that. At Chicaring in particular, because it was, it would be like seven, it would, it could be the six to eight kids, six to eight kids that we were seeing every year. So we sort of built that into our numbers there. So there are certain grades where you do see, you'll, when you look at the reasons, there are certain grades where you see, it's a, it's known that you're going to see, you're going to see fifth grade, so if the private schools, right? The private school phenomenon, like leaving from eighth grade. We see a reduction usually in ninth grade because that's when a lot of kids may leave. So there's certain grades that we know there's just past practices that we're, that's going to happen. So I'm not, I'm not as surprised to see the first grade, the hundred and thirteen and the hundred and eleven because that's typical, that's been past practices for a long time to see a large increase from kindergarten to first grade. It's in the middle grades that sometimes, you know, play out sort of based on more of the town itself between grades, because there's nothing you can say that's particular about, you know, first moving to second, second moving to third and so on.
So Barbara, when you're coming up. So Barbara, when you're coming up with your needs from a um, cohort and the number of teachers and all that stuff by level, you're looking for some combination of the one and three-year projections to say, do I feel like I have enough teachers to cover this and also do the slice based on, we've kept the classes at twenty three, that we'd be able to do the shifting, even if we need to move teachers between grades to be able to cover that. And that's baked, that assumption is baked into this budget.
Absolutely. And um, I was thinking about space utilization too, as we move uh, uh, cohorts through the building. Um, uh, our projections, um, have been very reliable. Um, uh, our, uh, you know, we pick up kids, you know, like our cohort of eighty-two fifth graders started as a cohort of fifty-five or sixty way back when. You know, we definitely pick up over time, um, but we lose kids, you know, to private school or to homeschool or to, uh, you know, families who relocate to other communities or out of state. Um, so my, uh, you know, we definitely have a handle on that. The, um, I lost my train of thought. Uh, but we, but we definitely, we definitely, oh, I know what I was going to say. Uh, the volatility in communities that have a lot of rental properties uh, with, you know, families turning over as leases turn over is not obviously the Sherburne experience, right? There's very little rental property. So most of our families, like, like families are already being in touch with us uh, in anticipation that they'll be, they're in the process of a purchase and sale or they're, you know, they know that it's, it's pending. So we already start, I always feel like Santa Claus, starting our list and checking it twice. And we literally um, count our, our in migration and our out migration uh, starting now. Um, you know, the town census gives us very reliable incoming kindergarten projections. The actual names on the list might change, but the uh, uh, but the, the number is, is very reliable. So, um, uh, you know, this year we had, uh, I think the largest influx we had was uh, six new children in fourth grade. Most grade levels get two, three, four new students, once you factor in the in migration with the out migration.
And the six plays into the numbers you're seeing for fourth grade, you know, the hundred and twelve and a hundred and fifteen.
Um, final point, more just sort of doubling down on the point that Amanda made. Uh, the addition of these resources um, is, I think I got a little bit more visibility into how some of the sausage is made through some of the school advisory uh, meetings and how some of these roles, sort of, I'll call them at the center, enable the teachers and the teaching assistants to really hammer on their job and with their, uh, with their classrooms. And I would assume that they would be far more distracted or not be able to keep up at pace if a lot of these uh, resources weren't there. I would add in library, art and other kinds of uh, functions that really sort of add depth to um, the experience that the kids have in the um, in the classroom. So it, um, this is, seems like money incredibly well spent. So I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. Uh, I have no more questions.
I just have a, I have a quick question. Thanks, Dennis. Um, what is the strategy? And maybe we don't have to go into it here, or what is the strategy if they say five percent? Given, given kind of the note that we got regarding the state of Sherborne and they want everyone to go in and cut, you know, and look deep and hard? And um, what's the strategy for?
So I, I think we have like a short-term strategy in that we could tie that to some additional grant funds that we have. Um, you know, you, you'd like, you like to save those for real needs versus something that you plan for. Um, but um, so there, there's a little bit of tweaking we can do there. The other thing is, um, we could go back and look at some of the ads. I think I broke apart in there that we've got some also forty thousand dollars of increases in operating expenses. So outside of the salaries, we could go back and look at that a little closer if we need to, to tighten up a bit. But I think um, we feel that what is being presented is, is really what is needed and it puts us in a good position to move forward. Um, with still unknowns that could be coming forth and being able to pivot immediately because we've got some grant funds that we can rely on. So that's sort of our strategy that we, you know, even had before COVID and even more so with COVID.
Okay.
Have you received any revised guidance from the advisory uh, committee?
Uh, no, no. Um, and I think they just have to wait and pull it all together, right? Where, where obviously schools are the largest piece of the budget, but they have to see how everything else plays out. And um, you know, it's a year or two where I think everyone's asking for some large capital request, which also plays into everything. So um, uh, you know, the region in itself is, is looking at a, a pretty large um, request from the two towns for a, a major roof project here. So there, there is a lot going on that needs to be evaluated. But I think we've tried to streamline at least the in-district um, budget as tightly as we can. And when we talk about the out-of-district uh, budget coming up, I, I can tell you how there's a little bit more wiggle room that we potentially can do to help soften your overall um, ask. So do you want me to go on to the, so the out-of-district? So um, obviously the, just a reminder for, you know, everyone is that the town of Sherburne covers any Sherburne resident aged three to twenty-two who's not educated in district. Um, and so that's why you'll see on the schedule that I provided, um, you know, elementary placements, middle school placements, high school placements and, and students um, twelve and up, up to twenty-two years. So what your budget is based on right now is every um, out-of-district placement that we know of, plus um, one or two that we, or couple, that we have strong belief that will be um, placements either later this year or definitely in fiscal year twenty-three. Um, and so this, the table that you see shows um, the different categories of age. So you've got pre-K through five, um, less than three, you've got middle school, less than three, high school, less than three. We separately break out twelfth grade at the high school because a good portion of those students may graduate. So you can get a feel of what may age out or graduate out of your budget for fiscal year twenty-four. So we like to highlight that just to show that there are four students in that category where there's a chance that at least half of them will actually graduate and you'll have some relief from your out-of-district budget. And then we have the twelve plus up to twenty-two years is less than three. So when you add that up in totality, we have about eight hundred thousand dollars of projected um, placements. You had, um, and that's a number, just total of ten. So we have nine uh, budgeted placements in fiscal year twenty-two at a fiscal year twenty-two budget number of six hundred and seventy thousand. So we are seeing an increase of a hundred and thirty thousand when you look at the growth dollars. Um, and then, so what I also like to show the committee is the changes from fiscal year twenty-two budget to fiscal year twenty-three budget, because it's all, a lot of times it can be um, hidden that how much volatility there is um, in this sort of uh, part of our operation. So you can see that we went up a hundred and thirty thousand, but that was caused by a graduated, aged-out placements, um, a change in placements. So someone went to a placement that was um, less expensive than what we had budgeted for. We had a new placement, we've got some potential new placements, and then we have to put on a three percent increase on tuition. So that gives you your net, shows you your net activity of the hundred and thirty thousand. So what Sherburne does is that um, we don't put all eight hundred thousand dollars into your operating budget because the state has um, affords us what is called circuit breaker reimbursement. So the circuit breaker reimbursement is basically to help towns offset the cost of expensive placements out of districts to give some financial relief. So I, I'll give you just a um, a quick and dirty. So let's say we have a hundred thousand dollars of a tuition placement. What the, the state makes you pay is at least four times your foundation budget. So that typically in any given year, that's in the high forty thousand dollars um, range. So let's just use fifty thousand dollars to make our math easy. So we incur a hundred thousand dollars. We have to, we have to at least pick up four times foundation, which is the fifty thousand dollars. So we have to take the whole fifty thousand dollars is our responsibility. What's left after that is what's called circuit breaker reimbursement is based on. And right now it's seventy-five percent. So that's what's mandated. That's what actually they've been paying us for the last couple of years. And with the Student Opportunity Act, it's pretty much sure that we're going to at least get seventy-five percent. We are going to get that seventy-five percent of circuit breaker reimbursement. So we used to have to play around and say, oh, you know, we're not sure, we might get four, we might get fifty percent. We might get, you know, sixty-five percent, but pretty much we can, um, at least for next year, we'll say, it won't stay forever, that we feel pretty comfortable that anything over um, four times foundation, we will get reimbursed back. Not this year though, it's next year, because it's, it's a reimbursement from what we incurred this year back in to pay for some of our out-of-district expenses in fiscal year twenty-three. So what Sherburne Advisory, what the town of Sherburne likes for us to do is to apply as much of that circuit breaker money that we anticipate getting um, to your operating budget, because that puts a, a relief from your tax, um, from your taxpayers if they're not being taxed on uh, monies that we know we can cover with uh, circuit breaker reimbursement. So um, right now in your budget, we are looking at using three hundred thousand dollars of circuit breaker reimbursement. That's comprised of um, what we estimate we're going to get in fiscal year twenty-three. And I, and we did it, uh, what's in there right now is assuming sixty percent of the reimbursement. And um, then we also, we usually keep ourselves a safety net. So because right now we're on budget, I, my safety net that I have been holding for fiscal year twenty-two, I'm going to be able to apply to fiscal year twenty-three. And so when you put those two numbers together, that's how we come up with the three hundred thousand dollars. So what we're proposing to put in your operating budget is the half a million dollars. And then we put in a hundred percent of transportation. So what that leaves us with is that there's still, um, uh, there's still cushion for us to have in case we have unexpected placements. And you could potentially have an out-of-district placement that could range anywhere from, say, forty-five thousand up to, if you get a, a move-in, that could be a severe um, residential, high-needs um, student. It could be like three hundred thousand dollars. So um, we'd like to be able to have some control at our level to be able to accommodate those unexpected expenses. If it got, if it got really bad, your um, town does have a special education um, stabilization fund. And that's where we could go and ask for money to be transferred there if we, if we needed to, to cover those expenses. So the town of Sherburne did put funds into that, um, I want to say probably five or six years ago. So there is an amount there to cover if we need to. But we'd like to be able to cover, say, anything under a hundred thousand with a holding on to circuit breaker and managing that ourselves. What we don't use and we apply uh, to the next year to um, to alleviate that expense of being built into the budget. So it gets a little complicated, but that's sort of how circuit breaker reimbursement works. The new piece that we have this year, and I highlighted in your monthly financial report, is they are now starting to reimburse us for um, out-of-district transportation. So that is new this year. It's being phased in. Um, so it's going to take four years before we get to a point where they're giving you, similar to the tuition, that a student's placement has to exceed the foundation, four times the foundation cost. Then they add the transportation to what's sitting there as um, for the excess uh, tuition. And then that's what gets reimbursed at the seventy-five, in four years will be reimbursed at the seventy-five percent. Right now it's twenty-five percent this year, fifty percent uh, in twenty-three and so on, seventy-five percent, then a hundred percent. So we are seeing some relief on out-of-district um, transportation, which is very helpful because if you look at your counterpart in Dover, Dover's out-of-district transportation is actually more than their regular ed transportation. So this is going to be a huge benefit uh, to them, um, because the amount of money they do spend on out-of-district transportation. So the state finally did realize that that's a, a huge burden to towns too, to transport these students. So they're looking at it, it covering, um, you know, all operating expenses for your out-of-district students. Um, I think, I think I explained, um, most of everything. So like I said, I do like, if we um, come back in March, if we don't foresee that we're going to have any additional placements and I'm, we're not going to need any of that circuit breaker reserve, I do see as putting an additional fifty to sixty thousand dollars of circuit breaker towards your operating budget. So that would reduce your operating budget by fifty or sixty thousand dollars because we'll say we have circuit breaker reimbursement to cover that much more of your projected fiscal year twenty-three tuition. So that is one potential um, budgetary relief that could help your, your numbers a little bit uh, when you look at uh, the out-of-district and in-district together.
Any questions? No.
Okay. So the last piece is capital. So I, um, we're still finalizing a few things. The good news is that the placeholder that you've already approved at the seventy-five thousand dollars is going to be the max. Um, I'm looking at probably slightly under that. We just need to go back and look at a couple of the classrooms. We just got updated quotes from last week on, uh, you know, we're doing flooring projects. That's all that you have on your fiscal year twenty-three requests were um, classrooms uh, to be either recarpeted or re-tiled. And we're just trying to make sure we're pulling together the right cohort of um, rooms to be done. So um, I needed, we lost Friday, which is when we were going to go check that out. So I, I'm not quite ready to tell you what that number is going to be, but I, I feel comfortable. You've already put forward to the capital committee uh, of the town, the seventy-five thousand dollar placeholder, which is going to cover what we need. It's going to probably be a little less. And I will provide you with the exact rooms that we're going to include in um, the updated number for your March meeting. Um, and then we'll get back to the capital committee. They're just starting their work um, on the capital budget. Uh, so we're, we're, we're fine with our timing.
Just on that capital, I never had a chance to ask, and the last mean tractor, is that like a one more, like what, what it?
Yeah, so, um.
At the school?
Yeah, we have like a small tractor that has a plow on it and, you know, we use it um, in the winter, but it also can do some outside uh, work too. So that's, it's, it's on the replacement cycle, on the onsite insight to be um, out in that year. But we'll take a look at it. We do do pretty good repairs and refurbishments to our existing equipment. Um, so we'll have to determine whether or not it is past its useful life at that point or if we can get a couple more years out. But based on industry standards, that's when that piece of equipment should typically be ready for replacements. Um, so that's, that's the placeholder on that.
Thanks.
Comes in handy definitely for snow removal.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Gimlick does all the sidewalks, the tractors, about the width of the sidewalk and keeps us, keeps us in the move.
Exactly. So um, the next step in this process is that um, uh, Nancy will accompany us to a meeting with Sherburne Advisory on February sixteenth. Uh, any other members that would like to join in or find it's not a, it's not a posted Sherburne School Committee meeting? Um, it's just representatives go and share um, the budget with the complete advisory. So, you know, when you see our two advisory members on the call tonight, well, the whole committee will have an opportunity to ask questions about um, the budget. So we will do a small presentation and bring them up to date with the latest numbers that you're seeing tonight on the sixteenth. Um, and then we can report back anything that they ask us to do. Then we will open up your March meeting with sort of, this is where the budget stands right now and bring you up to speed and then do your open, your, your public hearing uh, for your budget for any community members who want to come and ask questions about the, the Sherburne School Budget. And then you'll do your final approval that night and then it's out of our hands and onto the town to follow through their process. So we're getting close.
Any questions on the capital, any more questions on the capital or the um, the process going forward? No. All right. Dawn, does that conclude?
I believe that concludes all that I have to say tonight. Um, in the, I will say though, if after the fact you have any questions, just send them to Nancy. Um, and you know, is it, as you uh, process all of this, if you don't hesitate to reach out because we want to make sure you're comfortable um, with the budget moving forward. So let Nancy know and we'll get you any answers that you need.
All right, great. Thanks so much, Dawn. Um, and everyone involved in the budget. The next on the, is the approval of the consent. Um, and everyone involved in the budget. Um, the next on the is the approval of the consent agenda. Um, and I will make a motion, because does someone have a motion to approve the minutes of November sixteenth?
Minus one.
Twenty twenty-one? Do I have a second?
Amanda Brown, second.
Any discussion? Okay. Uh, Gira Russo?
Um, Nancy, should I have stand since I wasn't there?
Oh, uh, sure, yes.
I wasn't appointed yet.
That's right. Okay. I always forget, these always seem to go back.
They're so far away.
Yeah.
But I wasn't there.
Uh, Amanda Brown?
Um, Amanda Brown, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis Quant, yes.
And Nancy Cordell, yes. All right, um, the rest of the items are, there's just more information in the packet that for the other, the Dover and the Regional School Committee Minutes. And if you have any items or agenda items that you want to bring forth before our next meeting for March fifteenth, please, um, please let me know. All right, great. Well, um, we have to pull to adjourn, adjourn, correct? Or can we do a unanimous pull to adjourn the meeting?
I can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everyone.